Two LLC filed an application for a license for the retail sale of distilled spirits by consumption on the premises located at 6031 Main Street here in Lula. We've run the ads, Mayor and Council, y'all will remember that the proprietor was here last month with a beer and wine and believed that he was also here for the distilled spirits for consumption on premises, but that application came in after the advertising deadline, so he asked us to move forward as quickly as possible, and that was the reason we put this item on as a voting item for tonight. And the public hearing is done as a courtesy, but if anyone here to be heard at this public hearing regarding this request for the alcoholic beverage license for distilled spirits consumption on the premises?
Good evening, Dave Molyneum, Hemlock Street. I just want to say, we need it. If this place is gonna take off Lula, which it looks like it is, people will want somewhere to go. If they can just have a glass of wine or a beer, like they're gonna bother. It's revenue for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else here to be heard at this public hearing regarding this request? And I declare the public hearing closed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joey. Again, I want, there were some new folks came in after I went everybody, but that's okay too, Jim. I'll just cut it up with you, it's okay. You can hit me back one day. We want to start off with a prayer, I'm gonna place ladies and plagues, those prayers. Do you have the opportunity to meet here tonight, discuss the city business, work with citizens of Lula, do what's best for everyone concerned? God help us make the right decision for the city. For your trust in the best things, amen. Amen. Attention, salute, plagues.
Our prayers are to the highest and best states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the citizens' comments?
I want to talk about the importance of information about the past and the future. Having this information should not only tell us where we are now, but also what we need to understand, not only for the present needs of our city, but more importantly, what we need for our city to grow and improve the future of our community, and especially the future of our children. We citizens are depending on all of our elected officials, regardless of their feelings, to take the lead in seeing that these things are accomplished. We can't afford to let anything we do or think hinder us from reaching our goals. We aren't here to kill, to steal, or to destroy one another, but to move all of us towards something better. All of us, more or less, have had sad stories. All of us need to ask ourselves, do we want to stay in the pink pen? Do we want to like exchange and have a better life and a better living? Just we never live the better way for you and me. So please ask yourself, what kind of people are you talking, traveling, and dealing with? Associate with people who can inspire, educate, and have the to reach your dreams of success. Curiously consider the advice of others. Please know that if you fail to get away from the wrong people, you will never meet the right people. This remorse and like people to embrace it. Please ask yourself, what kind of person you are? Take the time to think about actions and behavior, your own and others. Self-control is a very important thing to take about for all of us. The things we do and say affect ourselves and others. We must think before we speak and ask if what we are saying is harmful and hopeful or helpful and instructive to their aloners who depend on us.
Anybody else? Okay, I just, everybody got a copy of the minutes, those two, Z? I can change your attention note. Also, you already know, we had announcement, please, Rebecca. January, we still got some minutes, you already do. All right, this count money.
Let's count money. So. All right, so the good news is, bank balances remain constant, and they continue to grow. I'll make one comment, our loss contributions are state, and it's interesting, we've run a couple of months behind on that, and squash collections are actually off from November to October by about $300. We shouldn't get concerned because it's up over $600 over last year. Current conditions, we are halfway through the year, we're actually in our 28th week of our fiscal year, and gosh, amazing how time flies. So, you can hear me talk about two funds tonight, I've been hearing 10 funds now, actually, and of those two funds, two of the ones you'll take here to talk about are the general fund, operational fund, and the water and sewer utility fund. In the revenue side of the equation for the general fund, we have been blessed. We have currently shown on the balance, I'll be removing this month, $552,872. That is what we call ARP money, ARC money. And if you remember, a number of years, a year ago, federal government made its distribution based on population, and that's part of our distribution cycle. And that inflates the revenue. So we always remove that dollar and act as a one-way boat seat, and reality is, currently, where we should be at about 46.2% of remaining budget. We're actually at 52.4%, so we're actually in pretty good shape. We brought in $783,800. So, in the general fund, so more importantly, I said the same thing every month, in your household at home, it's not how much you bring in, it's how much you spend going out. And good news for us is, is where we had $783,000 brought in on revenue year-to-date, we have expenditures of $679,000. So we are actually a positive position on cash flow, you'll hear more about that in a second. Does anybody have any questions on the general fund? No, it's kind of sweet right now. All right, so let's talk about the utility fund. Still a positive picture on the revenues. We love to say when we're wrong, and we made an estimate on sewer tap fees this year. We budgeted $125,000. And the reason I bring that up is because we've already brought in, what's the auditor, $386,000. Unfortunately, that money doesn't go towards operations, so it's kind of a misnomer. That money is set aside in a separate bank account, you'll hear me talk about those that are up on the screen right now. So we knocked that number out because that inflates the revenue picture as well. So in reality, we brought in $588,629, and again, where we all did about 46.2%, we're fortunate in that we've already brought in revenues of 63%. So again, going back to, well, what's your expenditures? We have had one major expenditure this year in what we call Sewer Line I, you'll hear about that briefly, but we paid an expenditure of $222,075, but it's still showing up on this report, that'll come away this month, we finish up the audit. That leaves us a revenue, remember for a second, $588,000, and we have expenditures of $650,000. Reality, we have a positive cash flow of about $104,000 between those two accounts. The one thing on water and sewer we like to talk about is more importantly, we can't use those capital dollars for the operations. We want to recognize that water and sewer revenue is a challenge for us all, and you'll hear more and more discussion about that. You'll hear some discussion tonight, a little bit about tap fees and what they cost, so here's what I'm gonna tell you, a little bit about tap fees, so you understand. When we making capital improvements to our water system or our sewer system, it really doesn't matter what we paid for it yesterday. What really matters is what would it cost us to replace it tomorrow? So, an example is, we built a new waste treatment facility some 12-plus years ago, and we did it for somewhere around $12 million worth of lesson. Today, to replace that same element for the same capacity, not counting the land, would probably cost us somewhere around $21 million. So when you hear in a little bit, we talked about tap fees, and you can see we talked a little bit more about that on the bank balances, that's important that we're putting that one in reserve, so that when we have to make expansions, we can afford those costs, and at the same time, we can recognize that unfortunately, the cost goes up. No different from you going to the grocery store right now. Who would have ever thought a loaf of bread would cost $4? Or a gallon of milk would be at the price it is today, if you can find it. All right, so let's talk about bank balances. I said they're pretty constant, a pretty good position for us to be in, but we've got a lot of expenditures that we set aside and we've talked about with the council. We currently have exposed funds that are available to us of $6.2 million. We have projects, or road projects, we've set aside, $397,000. I say that because the council hasn't taken a position on that yet, but we are putting together a bid package for some resurfacing, what we call cut and fill. We do have water and sewer projects now that are exceeding, one of them, Sewer Line I, which you heard me mention earlier, is soon to be completed, thank goodness, knock on wood, and we don't have any expenditures that are above the bid price, so that's a great position being. And if it'll ever stop raining and the ground will ever dry up, we're actually putting in a new well system. Other than that, we have some additional dollars that we've set aside, the idea of building a potential bypass to alleviate some of the traffic issues. Now would be the time, when anybody has any questions, and we.
Have a question?
Yes, sir.
What is the bypass? We'll talk about that a little bit more, it's an opportunity to alleviate some of the, well, pinpoint truck traffic that goes through the city, and alleviate some congestion that we see now and into the future for residential or vehicle traffic, other than trucks. How about that? Okay, I just didn't know for clarity, the citizens would like to know.
Oh, they'll get there soon, because that's gonna be a big deal down the road, so everybody will get to come in on that, because as you pointed out, we want citizens to be included in that.
Please.
Yeah, and it's one that we wish wasn't gonna be the challenge it is, and we're actually gonna see funding from other sources as well on that. So, you have in front of you budget adjustments. We have our auditor in the house today, so we adopt a budget that you heard me talk about in the general fund and the utility fund, which is, I think I counted it up and know it, but it's about, probably exceeds revenue, probably 40 line items, and expenditures probably 30 to 60 in general fund, and water and sewers similar in that, not as many revenue streams, but similar in that in the number. So we adopt that, and we adopt a budget in the beginning of prior fiscal year, we use that as a line on a budget, just for review. So we try to understand historically what our needs will be, and then we recognize some of the operational costs that we might anticipate. All that being said, that is not the way the great state of Georgia recognizes our budget. So they categorize how that will be done, and let's see. So every year, I think Wayne's affair statement, we go back and revisit the dollar amounts, is that correct? I can't think of a year that hasn't happened. We do that by department, so the departments are general government, public works, transfer in and out, and then sales tax, we recognize those. So we have department expenditures that we recognize, $552,873, ARP direct revenue, which we're not recognizing yet, and this goes for years, I say that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that amount's not part of the equation we're recognizing, we just received that dollar, it will actually show up in next year's audit.
When you spend it.
When you spend it.
Right. I can explain that a little more of it.
Right. So, one of the things is, the budget amendment increases the city overall general fund budget by $48,000. So not surprisingly, in this last year, we had a number of acquisitions that we made in land purchases, as well as experience in cost and engineering and design for also, with the idea, throw a couple up there. Sewer Line I had some equations in there, we're still not finished up from previous year. This next year, you'll see Carter Allen as his expenditure, and then not picking on our attorney, but we used him up this past year because from the legal side of acquiring those properties and making those expenditures. So we would ask the council tonight, this is a voting item that we recognize, as it was advertised, to recognize the changes in the general fund. I don't know that we have to recognize ARP money, we're just addressing that.
We must have a budget that covers the expenses.
So for those in the audience that need to know, we've committed those dollars to Sewer Line I, to reduce those dollars.
So Mr. Mayor, if you'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
All right, everybody understand what's going on?
I'm hearing a motion approved.
Got motion moving deeper to approve budget adjustments? I'm studying the current spin. Any more discussion about it? Or better say aye?
Aye.
The next item, everybody needs to get good and comfy, we're gonna be here for an hour or two, and then probably about a month.
Right now, I'm talking to him. He told me who I'm talking to.
So we, every year, the state of Georgia has required an independent audit be taken, do it internally, we're not for that purpose, you might hear a little bit about that, but every year, we go back and we review what we did financially, and you'll hear a little bit tonight, we'd like to compare ourselves a little bit to last year, but that's not required. What you're gonna hear today is the financial statements that we're reporting in the state of Georgia. And we're fortunate that we have Wayne Tuck with us, with Walker, Pearson, Tuck, and I guess I should start the clock, right, so we make sure it doesn't go too long?
All right.
Come on up, Wayne.
I will not keep this meeting, I promise you that.
So.
It's for some, it's an opportunity to do your report. Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here to see and then go over the results of my work. We appreciate the opportunity once again to serve the city and citizens by performing the audit, and we take responsibility, it goes with that, very serious, to ensure that we provide you and citizens a professionally completed audit that you have before you today. So again, thank you for the time, the mayor, and share that with you. It'd be remiss of me if I didn't take a moment also and thank Dennis and Tangi specifically for all their assistance. She might imagine he asked for a lot of information, and we bombard both of them, especially Tangi, I think gets the worst of it, with a lot of requests for information to do the audit. Probably, we have to look at a lot of things, a lot of documents, so we keep her busy pulling things for us to review and try to remember things that happened over a year ago sometimes, and why it was done the way it was, but Tony Hurd and Dennis, they're always very helpful and did it to us, and I appreciate both of them going out of their way to help me and my team with getting the information, building, preparing the audit, and get it done for you. Not like, again, I promise not to take too much of your time up this evening, I just want to go over a couple of things with you, the things that I think most people are most concerned about, and leave you with a couple of thoughts and suggestions of the things that I would do if I was sitting here in place, and the information that I want to take out of this report that helped me make decisions on behalf of the citizens. So first and foremost, what everybody cares about is a little bit of the outcome of the audit. And this year, we have two audits we actually did for the city, and I'm gonna start off with the first one, which is the traditional standard audit that we do, the financial statement audit, as we call it, and we covered that on page one of the audit report. And we did, this is where we do the same report, the same audit we perform every year on the financial statements, and I'm happy to say that we're able to issue an unqualified opinion, as we say in the very second paragraph on page two. We feel the financial statements represent fairness in all material respects, the financial position of the city as of June 30th of '22. An unqualified opinion is the opinion that you want, that is, saying that we believe the financial statements are accurate without any if ands or buts, materially speaking. That's the goal, and that's the outcome that you should, as a council, expect, but never take for granted, because again, it goes back to the hard work of the staff, being able to properly document, have the documentation properly laid, properly approved, put away, so that when we do ask for it, they can show us that those documents, that's our audit evidence, so that we can come to that conclusion, issue that opinion. So again, it goes back to the hard work, the daily of the staff, to be able to have that, do things daily correct, and to have that information available for us to see it when we go to perform the audit. And our profession each year has gotten more and more standards included, more and more rules every year, and has to look at additional things and looking more detailed than we ever have before. I've never seen, seems like every year, there's something more they're telling us we need to be looking at, which is probably good for the citizens, but does add to the workload for everybody when it comes to that. Now, the second opinion that's a little different this year is what we call a single audit under uniform guidance. What does all that fancy word mean? Well, this year, the city received federal funding through the form of a GFO grant loan from the state of Georgia. Where did Georgia get that money? They got it from the federal government, and it flowed through the state and down to the city as a loan. Well, when you receive more than $750,000 of funds that are federal funds, you're required to have an additional audit, it's referred to as a single audit under uniform guidance. What that means is, we do basically a compliance audit, and as I shared with some of the council earlier, it is an audit of making sure that you follow all the rules for strings that come with receiving federal money. As you might imagine, there's a pretty good list of rules of thou must do's and thou must not do's with the money. And we are required to do an additional audit to make sure the city followed those. And we cover, issue another opinion there on page 29 of the audit of the packet here, where we issue an opinion on our findings from doing that work, and again, I'm also happy to say that we feel the city comply in all material respects with the requirements of that federal grant. So again, those are the key thing, that's very important. Some of these federal monies are easily, easy for people to trip up on, because there's so many little rules in there that some of them become gotcha type rules, if you're not on top of it, that you can easily make mistakes that lead to these things unfortunately being qualified, which then causes issues with potential eligibility for future grants. Fortunately, just by the hard work of the staff here, and Dennis is very aware of these rules, we're able to make sure that was followed correctly, and there's no issues there, so again, it goes back to the management and oversight, making sure that all that went well. It seems easy on the front afterwards, but again, there's a lot of work in the making sure that we're able to issue a clean opinion on this. And this ensures that the city is eligible in the future for other grants that make them available. They do often look at this to make sure that you handle federal money right in the past before you potentially are eligible for other grants. So this is a very good thing that will allow the city not to have any reason not to be awarded a grant in the future if one comes available, the city decides to apply for. So, with that said, I'd like to go over just a little bit of the financial information, and not without taking up too much of your time. If you would, on page five of the packet here, this is the balance sheet for all of what we call the governmental funds, which is everything for the city of Lula except its water sewer fund. Again, a lot of positive information here for you to look at, cash position across-the-board increase for the city over the prior year. You'll see, as Dennis mentioned, the ARPA funds is a new fund for the city that's listed on here. One of the requirements for that federal money is that it has to be treated as its own fund and kept separate from all the other city funds, which the city appropriately did. And as Dennis mentioned also, we did not recognize that money this year. Why? Because until you spend it, you have not earned it. You must spend it in compliance with the rules, or you have to give it back, or if you don't spend it, you have to give it back. So therefore, we show it on the balance sheet here as unearned revenue until the city spends it. I know Dennis has discussed the goals the city has for spending that according to the rules on the water sewer project, so that will happen in the future. But for the time being, we have to show it as unearned and show its liability to the city until that's done. On page seven of the financial packet here is what we call a segment of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. That's a fancy word for an income segment, or P and L segment, as most people know it as. And again, you'll see here, each of the city's governmental funds listed here, from the general fund, capital projects is your squash fund, obviously your T-sloths, and your ARPA fund. Nice to see that, again, when you look at this and compare it to prior years of revenues, like sales tax and other areas were up a good bit there, the squash was up, very nice to see that, T-sloths. Again, as I noticed, you don't see ARPA listed with revenue other than interest, I think account, this is anything we're able to show as earned until we spend that money in the future year. Down at the bottom of the page, you see net change in fund balance. What that is, is all the revenues of each fund minus all the expenses, and in each case across the page here, you'll see that we probably even were the best, and that's always a good thing, so we're able to increase fund balance or savings, and how we can look at it. So again, this is positive news across the page here, if you'll see that for the city right now. Over on page nine, then talking about the governmental funds, this is a water sewer fund right here on page nine, and again, it's the balance sheet for the water sewer fund, and again, if you look at this, you'll see the cash is up substantially over the prior year, nice thing to see there with that, see a nice increase there, again, with all the plans that the city has, and I was spoken to Dennis about it for different projects that are coming up, from water sewer lines to wells to all types of needs, you never, never can have too much revenue that are reserved if you take care of those type things going forward. On page 10 is the income segment for the water sewer fund. If you look down about the middle of the page, you've got an operating income of about 70, just over $77,000, that's down slightly, about $35,000 from last year. Now what's nice is the revenues were up. Unfortunately, the expenses went up more than the revenues did, and that leads back into the conversation that Dennis was having earlier with you about just inflation and expenses of life. So a conversation always has with your clients, city councils, and it's never a popular conversation, is the fact that you always have to pay attention to this very quickly, this could turn very easily with the economy we're dealing with and everything, where you're showing a loss on this. So unfortunately, that leads to having conversations about paying attention to your rates and making some of the hard, difficult decisions that have to be made on that occasionally to keep ahead of the flow of inflation expenses. Unfortunately, I remember when that sewer plant went new, now it's not. I know it's started to incur expenses for maintenance, and large pieces of equipment are starting to break out there, I know or have, and probably will be expected in the future, so again, it's just planning and staying on top of that as management, as the council, to make sure that this remains sufficient fund, that the revenues are sufficient to take care of the expenses and maintain it without having to be supported by the general fund or other sources. Beyond that, I just want to say again, thank you for the time and being entrusted again this year to work with the city, it's something that, again, I don't take for granted, and I really appreciate, enjoy working with the city. I would encourage you, this is not the most entertaining reading, but I would encourage you, if you have any problems sleeping one night, it might help you, but I would encourage you to read through this. I think the financial statements are good information, but it notes that the financials are really the meat on the bones. They explain why the numbers are the way they are, they give a little information about what's coming possibly, or what makes up those numbers. So I think if you read through this and look at it, it may help give you some confidence and some direction when you're trying to make decisions on future expenditures and decisions with the city's funds and what needs to be done, and they give you some help and some confidence in making those decisions. If you look through it, I think you'll find a lot of helpful information throughout there to help you with that. But again, thank you for your time, I appreciate you always in giving work with the city, and if you have any questions, I'm always available. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. I noticed that in some of the reports, there was an indication, and you may clarify this, was there a deficiency in internal controls for managing? Was there a deficiency in internal controls or managing, uh, compliance? I just didn't know if there was any, any specific one listed on. I, I, it looks like we were in compliance with some of the federal stuff during, during the audit. I just wondered if there was any, anything that stood out that we might need to be aware of and could address.
On page 28, I addressed the findings for the city.
Sure.
Okay, uh, I'll give you a quick synopsis of those items because it's kind of written in a calendar. So let me give you kind of a quick synopsis of each item.
Sure.
I'll tell you, the very first one is, is one that is, I personally do not agree with, but my profession says should do here. My profession says that every client should be able to write this report, hand it to me, and then I audit it. I don't think that is a realistic expectation of a small government to have someone on staff that has the knowledge of CPA and governmental in fact, which is a tiny niche of the profession, to be able to write this report, keep up with professional standards that are changing annually, and write this report properly and hand it to me. That is something you see with larger governments, city of Gainesville, uh, county governments, they have the staff, they have CPAs on staff, they, they can do that. I do not, I don't have a single client that has that ability. And this finding is one that says, if you can't hand me this report, I must say that that is a weakness in your internal controls.
Sure.
I believe honestly, uh, that not, and this finding goes on there because of that requirement, but is not, is not a statement, and I try to make that clear in this, of the inability of the staff to do things correctly. I just think that's, you know, that is a high standard to hold someone at, at a small government to expect to know how to do. So that's that requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second one on there is what we call a compliance finding. And that had to do with, uh, accidentally, things happened, even mistakes happened. SLOSS money being used, um, moved over to the water sewer fund, but was not used and was not moved back to the SLOSS fund before June 30th. Dennis and I have had conversations about that, that technically is a finding because SLOSS money is supposed to stay in its own bucket, not touch anything else. And we've had an exception of that this year that happened. Uh, but that is a one time event, it's been corrected or is about to be corrected after adoption. And, um, it's been on there. I did put that down in the statement, we called it, because we could see in the financial statements that that, that liability between the funds is there. So I'm kind of just, I'm doing what's supposed to be done there. Uh, but those are the two items that you're seeing on that report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And let me just add, on those two items, we will have to report to the state what action, if any, can be taken. So every year, item one that we identified, uh, as an example, that's left up. They always want to know from, from staff, what is the resolution and what will be the timeline? And that's an easy one on, uh, the staff can only report what the ability of the council to pass in the budget example is. We'll say if it requires CPA, that would be our response, and that those dollars have yet to be associated, so we don't put a date on it. Uh, the SLOSS funds that we're talking about, actually, is sewer line I where we paid in advance on some of those dollars. And so that's just been an adjustment that we'll make on that. So excellent question.
You guys?
All right, thank you.
And you know, you don't have to leave. No, you be here.
I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna stay here for a whole day.
All right, man, where are we sitting?
Uh, two things. One was, uh, I failed to put on here, there's been some discussion about, uh, cell phones for council members have been requested. We did talk about that with, uh, finance, and I don't know that we came and walked away with, uh, a decision on that one way or another. I don't think it was a disagreement. I have requested, uh, both, uh, of our providers to give us funding prices. So I'll copy those if I get them this week. And I'll leave, put that on the agenda if that's what y'all want.
What would you drive to a great place with whole county?
Right, it would be every, every member would get the opportunity. So that would be a budget adjustment if we were to go forward with that. Other than that, water and sewer current conditions? Y'all may have noticed, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. First thing, you know, we experienced temperatures here, uh, we historically have had, actually, here at city hall, we three degrees, so unbelievable. And you, everyone's in the community should be aware of the challenges that presented. Fortunately, our staff, we actually, uh, worked, uh, Christmas night and Christmas, uh, the next day. And, uh, when I say fortunately, uh, not for those of us at work, but, uh, we've never had any issues on our side of operations, other than, uh, the waste treatment plant. But I'll talk about that in just a second. So the issues we had with the water system, unfortunately, were the numerous water line breaks that individuals had. And, uh, at one point, just to let everybody know, we were losing 30,000 gallons an hour of water based production and storage. It was a very concerning time. And, uh, you know, I'm pleased it wasn't failure on our system wide, thank goodness. Although it would have been nice if we found one big problem and been able to fix it. Uh, the good news is, is, uh, uh, we were able to manage our way through it. Uh, hated that we had to put a bowl of water advisory out, but we were at risk of actually, uh, going to zero water. And we actually never did that. Uh, but, yeah, like I told you, at one point, we were losing 30,000 gallons an hour. And it was, uh, unfortunately, you know, we've got a responsibility to address those issues in advance. Uh, so that being said, uh, we've had some billing requests, Mr. Mayor and I talked about it earlier. We would take that to, uh, uh, potential for some credits to be issued. So the city is charged with charitable, with billing, uh, what costs us to produce water. What we do issue credits on directly is if somebody comes in and has a leak or break, and they get it repaired and prove that it's made to us, then we average their sewer because we recognize, uh, with water line breaks and those kind of things, then go through a sewer system. So that part is already done. Uh, but these are exceptions of that, we'll talk about that with the utility committee and then, uh, see what position it is. Unfortunately, back, you might remember, gosh, and time goes on, about 15 years ago when we experienced our first drought, uh, the state of Georgia recognized, you know, everybody's got a responsibility, you've got a whole, everybody accountable for the water they do. So it's an awkward position for us to be in. For those, we know there were numerous number of accounts, uh, that did experience, uh, leaks. Most importantly now, and I can't stress this enough, is to figure out what caused it. And, you know, we promoted, as did everybody else, the faucets, drip and what have you. If you still let faucet drip and ended up having frozen pipes anyway, and you've had it repaired, look at what the cause was. Go back out, insulate, put in windbreaks, uh, around your house because we're not out in the woods yet this winter, and you probably had some more exposure or so. Uh, if you want to spend a few dollars, that's probably where you need to make sure is that you don't have wind being a catcher up on if you're piping, and insulate those pipes. And then heaven forbid, uh, what we've experienced in the past is not these record low temperatures we've experienced in the past that we've been in the teens for four or five days. And that we've experienced where we had water line breaks, similar to like we had this time. Uh, so do yourself a favor, spend a few dollars on the insulation, will save you the lung. Heaven forbid that we experience more cold waves, uh, like we have now or have, you know, get down in the teens for a number of days. It is well worthwhile to let those faucets, yes, water, hot water and cold water lines have to be insulated and have to be drilled. The other thing we had was this, uh, uh, this county line water tank. Uh, apparently, where it's making some speculation here, uh, somebody shot a hole in the county line water tank. And, uh, we think it was, uh, New Year's Eve, uh, when it transpired. But anyway, that is not an easy thing or a quick repair. Actually, uh, the mayor's wife gets credit for seeing it, is that right? And, uh, reporting it, and unfortunately for us, though, it's not a quick fix. It's not like go up, put a cork in the dam and get it fixed. Uh, these tanks are water, are glass line tanks, and it's especially repair those. Uh, we scheduled, uh, to repair those tanks, uh, this Friday, this coming Friday. So, but, you know, we all need to be pretty concerned when people may not be responsible in those where they're firing and shooting holes in utilities. So it's not a good thing, so we'll ask for you to bear that in mind. At the waste treatment plant, through the years, uh, when we've had cold snaps before, we've never experienced the problems we experienced there. On Christmas Eve, unfortunately, we had issues at the plant. The good news is, is, uh, again, is the design of that plant is built for redundancy. And so if we have one of something, we usually have two of something, and we have an ultimate way of accomplishing that. But it stressed our resources, uh, more so, I felt so sorry for all the folks that had the water line breaks, uh, on Christmas day and the next day, having, because like many of them said to me, you know a plumber. Well, I might know a plumber, but you getting ahold of him might be a whole nother story entirely. And the same was true for us bringing vendors out over the holidays. And, uh, my hats off to the people who helped us out. Uh, we were able to resolve, uh, most entities. And then the bigger challenge for us, very similar to what I mentioned earlier, if you need to recognize the cost, and we'd actually worked prior to, uh, the cold snap coming in, and we'd made some significant, uh, changes at the plant to try to eliminate, uh, the opportunities. Really why we were so successful with the water system, I think. But that being said, it's gonna be a challenge for us to understand, I mean, we just don't want to get down in those deep temperatures. That being said, we're still having issues with ammonia plant. All our other, uh, limits are being met. Uh, we continue to work with our engineers and our vendors on resolving that issue. I actually, uh, mayor, let's copy up there, a minute ago, we use, uh, uh, bugs, if you want to know, uh, to treat our waste treatment plant, and they're microorganisms. And, uh, so it's, it's you, deep, what type of bugs you use. I want more of your death, and it doesn't make good dinner conversation anyway. Uh, we're doing what we need to do, and, uh, it's a challenge to address that and we're reinforcing that, the facility we have. The next item was proposed TCR TAP fees, which everybody recognizes as TAP fees. Actually, what that is, is transmission capacity in reserve. So on water, uh, it can be the wells themselves, it can be the storage units themselves, and of course, the transmission, the lines of the ground. Very similar with sewer. It can be the capacity that we built in the waste treatment plant. Uh, it can be the reserve that we have available, uh, in the event that we need it, and then of course, uh, uh, the transmission. And so we've asked the council, uh, first went to the utility committee to recognize the changes in those prices. Uh, because remember I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about, we were looking at the funds and how correctly the, the city has, the council should be, uh, congratulated this for many years. They take all those dollars and they set them aside. So when, you can call it a rainy day, you can call it whatever you want, but when the need is there, the dollars are there. And we've seen some surrounding communities just recently experience that they didn't realize what the cost would be. And consequently, uh, for them, it's gonna be a painful adjustment to go up. Well, for us, we've kind of experienced that cost all along, and we recognize, again, like I said earlier, it doesn't matter what it cost us yesterday or like the waste treatment plant 12 years ago did. What does it cost us to replace that tomorrow? Because that's the cost you're gonna experience. So what's been asked of the council, uh, with a study that we did, uh, uh, back about a year and a half ago, is that they recognize that we increased those TCR fees. We took those to finance and finance incurred with the utility fund, that that would be considered. We will, with the council's approval, we will place that, uh, for public comment in the most effective way. Right. And we'll place, and like I said, Joey, if you and I can get together, we'll talk about what dates, so I can advertise that for it. Anybody got any questions? Anybody still got any leaks out there?
Do you have any?
I ran into the owner of Howard Brothers yesterday. I did, he was very happy, I think it had to do with all the PVC pipes he sold, but I'm just teasing.
And all the faucet feathers.
We, we were talking about his water needs, and I said, well, you can afford it because lord knows how much PVC pipe he sold. But I understand they, they provided quite a service for the community, and we're grateful to have them available to us.
Okay, it's time for Los Arcos Labor Restaurant Application for License for Retail Sales of Distilled Spirits by the Drink. For all pertinent needs, it is time to give a pair of motion to the council.
I have a question, I mean, accept the licenses.
I have my motion, I'd be shocked if they accept an application for license for retail sales of distilled spirits consumption prices. Second by Gene Man, all the birds I have?
Aye.
All the birds say no? Margaritas old? I had to say, I couldn't stand it. Okay, you know, we gotta establish a fee for those looks and come up to November of this year. We've got three councils to come up, this picks one, four, and five. Yeah, we're gonna take it. If you know, know that fee is $100 qualifying fee, yeah?
That's what it's been the last couple of years, Mr. Mayor.
So it always, maybe, so that's something to think about for next, next month, next year, right?
It would be next two, too much.
You don't think about that, see about the, they're gonna be the base, like they're gonna build themselves a mega plant, right?
Yes.
Put them on a qualifying year.
We do.
Or you can, you love to talk.
We know the qualifying dates will be August 21th through August 25th. Or during that week, there's a, we don't have to use each of those days, would it be that week?
Right, I can do it two and a half, two and a half days.
The fee should stay the same, we all want.
We, well, we don't know the law.
Yes, but it's still, I mean, it should, it's like 3% of your salary.
But it's just two and a half days to the top, is that correct?
Yes, yes, just during that, those days, 21 to 25, I believe it's three days now, Mr. Mayor, but we'll get that for you.
So the only other item we can ask you to consider on that is, uh, in years past, we've had the benefit of using Hall County elections, and this is a standalone election. So there will not, as we sit here today, unless our legislature comes up with it, we won't have a countywide election. You know, is that right?
Yes, correctly.
So we'll, we can still employ and ask them for pricing, uh, uh, to whether or not they will handle our elections. Or otherwise, we'll have to do that internally, which has been done in the past before as well. So that would be something that, you know, we would want to begin the discussion with Hall County, uh, in the coming months.
We don't, we don't want to pull this procedure, do we?
Yes, we do not. They would be hand ballots and mark ballots. We'd still have to follow, and the opportunity, that you brought that up, the opportunity may be that they can make those available to them. Normally, they do not let them, and this day in time, they no longer let, let them out of their possession. Yeah, so we can explore, we can explore their cost, and then report that later off to the council.
Not how many people is registered to vote?
I'll have to go back and look.
Wait, Tony's got that number?
Yeah. I want to say it was right at 15, huh? Was it not?
You're right.
And I think we had, gosh, that's the number I was.
Close to 800.
Yeah, we had right at 780 something, something like that, 783. There's a W.
And we've not done it locally since they changed the election laws in the last couple of years.
It might be difficult.
It will be difficult, so if that's the council's choice, then please let us know early so we can make sure we do what needs to be done.
Well, if we explore, let's explore the, what opportunities is available with Hall County, and then we can come back and report.
Some of us can explore too, when the city approaches a volume machine, two volume machines as a city itself, or is it? a city itself, or is it something we cannot do?
If we're properly certified, and it's all, there's a, I wish I could give you a yes or no, but there's a series of restrictions on all of that now. So um that's why I agree with Dennis that we need to check with Hall County, and if that's just a number that the council can't deal with, then it's not all a serious question.
And then the other side of that is, is other cities do utilize our services now, and it probably has more to do, as Joey said, uh the changes, the updated amendments to the election laws.
Well, do we know what other cities around here have an election number this year?
So this is not what we call an year, so almost, most municipal counties will have uh elections.
Okay, we have a bid project to put together for the stimulus yet?
We do, and those, and I know that everybody's interested in this, so I thought we'd go through the uh four hundred, and, no, I picked up the wrong one there, hold on just a second. This is so exciting. I can get it up, oh, I can't bring it up, I got it slide though. So anybody that is interested in this, it is great reading, uh you know, goes into great detail. So our goal is, uh this is available, uh we can send it to you as a PDF. It's actually, there's a website that we use for the state of Georgia that publishes these availabilities, and they begin to, so you begin to understand the expectations. And uh we can make those available to you as well as uh make the website available to you, but significant goal still is to bring that back in.
I know it's on that document, we're gonna have three council members.
Yes, they changed that, they changed that. That was when we drafted it up, actually, inquired that, while I didn't have the change, no change in competition anyway. So that's why.
So that's probably available online now?
So they can cop, so what, we don't put that online, we post the online connection, right?
Anybody here should be, I'm gonna probably, online?
Yes, and then it's all spelled out in there in great detail, that's the expectations and requirements.
On our website?
Actually, you're gonna catch the link, and then it defines in the bid document itself.
But the link is actually on our website, I'm trying to make sure everybody knows we're open, if we want bids.
So it is not, but it will, we can post it on our website. It's one of those items that, again, is somewhat, or more so than especially. So we utilize uh the state's uh websites as well as engineering websites. But we can post it, doesn't matter.
This doesn't, doesn't have to be this, this doesn't, a bid for this?
The engineer will, he advertises all of it.
I'm, I'm doing this.
Oh, you're good, you keep it up.
I actually have a follow-up question kind of in line to that. So when we are looking for bids, I know that we posted publicly, but is there like a website that we post it to that, that all these contractors like, they can only act, so that, that's how we, we get people to, to come and get?
Right, and then they track how many people actually pull the documents down. So we'll get a copy of when they pull documents down, we'll know who's pulling, because what we want, a lot of times, there may be changes that we make to a document, this is more so plans than is with uh like design plans, or that sort of thing. So we have the opportunity to contact those people in the event there's an update or a change to a document. So that's the whole idea is why you go through that. And that's why at the city level, we don't have that capability, so we don't know who pulls the documents down. That's a great question.
Extreme research you mentioned earlier, have a guess?
So those bids have not come, they have not finished up, they have something to do again with the weather, they just haven't been able to do all the measurements. But I met with them, gosh, what a, hey, like I met with them yesterday, no, had to be Friday. You can't keep track of it.
Still run yet.
It ain't. So we need to talk about that, cause I have the numbers here, but we still need to get together with the street committee. We're gonna have those discussions about documents, I mean about committee meetings in just a second.
What do the bids do by for the street?
We, those have not, we haven't set a bid date yet, because we don't have the documents to put in yet.
The resident building programs, going to go back to committee committees?
Yes. Yes. So we had a little bit of discussion uh with that, and a kind of an impromptu, the other item, that's the committee finance, if you remember, and there was some discussion there, uh not so much about Dog Park, Dog Park is going forward, we're asking for a bid document again for that, legal or not, the only cost we think we can get better pricing right now. The biggest problem we're having is finding a vendor that can meet a timeline, and we don't know what that timeline is, so we need to be able to come back to you and say, we can get it done in ninety days, or maybe a hundred and twenty days, because everybody's just covered up. That make sense to y'all? Make sense to us?
Okay, the question, coffee's a plan up the exterior committee, will be next Thursday to the nineteenth.
They did, six P M, good for the folks.
Some of them will be looking at next week, our city homes, got a mayor pro team, a city attorney, a city clerk, city judge, and a city manager. That's all we take care of, so you gotta input ideas.
I'm gonna show my egg ears right here. Um I didn't know we had a city judge.
We, municipal court.
So we have a municipal court for the city?
That's the way code enforcement is done.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
And I'm gonna give you a list of all court dates, and if you're bored, you can.
I just might.
It's somewhat entertaining, I mean, it's kind of cool to see.
Is it night court?
Uh no, it starts at four o'clock.
Oh, well, that's good, man, I can get that.
Yep, we actually have court this Thursday.
Where do they meet at?
Uh this Thursday, they'll actually meet over the police precinct, or utilize, has conscript right there, but normally they meet here.
They have something second Thursday?
Yes, with the exception of women judges, I would've got a calendar on, so y'all can see that.
So you said second Thursday at noon?
Yes, but I'm gonna give you a calendar, cause he does have some changes on there.
But just as a general?
Yes.
And the resident rezoning amendment changes going back to creators?
Not really, so if we're done with that, with the recommendation, we will advertise that for the changes next month, right, Joe? We have some, and if you remember, Tony correctly brought up uh some administrative changes, so we make actually deletions to those. And I don't think, Joey, I sent those to you for your, you to look over.
The mission for this first Thursday, which is, that's Thursday.
Yes, and that's, we, as you know, the uh January, they met differently this month, and then next month, they'll like, they're gonna ask for the second.
Did we vote, but we voted on that, right, to approve it with the changes?
Right, but we want, so now we take the public comment.
Okay.
We did, we did two readings on that because of the, we're required to not have y'all vote on an ordinance when you saw it for the first time, and that ordinance with the various changes y'all saw for the first time at the last meeting. So now what Dennis has said, there's been some recommendations, so that's why we're gonna have a second.
Yeah, Tommy got a star by the time, but let's quick pick up on it.
Okay, human resources has, has a discussion about some budgeted positions concerning assistant city manager and downtown manager, I heard, okay?
That was the discussion.
Do you have any more discussion there, or could I, is that what we have?
My recommendation was to, to vote for the positions. Um I know that we were going back to finance to decide about whether to offer a sign-on bonus, but I didn't get any word back on the decision on that.
So not to interrupt, Joey and I had some discussion about, we need some clarity from y'all, can come today, or can come next week, in that uh that particular sign bonus that y'all recommended, is who would administer that, how am I supposed to say, Joey?
Yes.
So who would administer, who would be responsible for checking that box? Would that be left up to the city manager, or would it be called council, recognize and approve that? You're gonna approve the sign bonus if you approve, begin with, when, once you hire a candidate and they're successful, how that's paid out, and who finally has the final say-so on that? That would be the question.
I would like to think that the council has given uh the go-ahead for a sign-on bonus, and that, you know, the finance committee has determined what that should be, at that point, I would think it would be the city manager, um or the city officials, that would determine if it gets paid out half, um when they get hired on, and then so many days later, they get the remainder or put it out of installments, I would say leave that to the city managers, my, my opinion.
I agree with that.
And that's very similar to the conversation we had, kick in, and then they can use that as a part of the mode, moving expense, they can use that as a choose for our secret, and then it can be paid at a later time, usually a period of ninety to a hundred and eighty days for the balance, that would be what we've seen other communities do similar to that.
So do the finance committee?
So the finance committee, we had discussion about it, I don't know there was a consensus uh from the committee, was there? In finance? About the city management position in the downtown. Yeah, we talked about, that's what we wanted up, the finance was, because we had talked about finance previously. Well, I think the discussion was centered around, again, the bonus was brand new, that came out of human resources, uh been previously heard by the finance committee, they made a recommendation to go forward with it, uh to notice a budgeted dollar amount that's already been set in the budget, uh and the question became, uh both positions, the assistant uh city manager, and there was a question, who could do what, and then could that person, uh words in anybody's mouth, also do the downtown manager's, that's what, but I don't think there was ever consensus on where to do that as part of the discussion.
That was the committee's consensus.
The finance committee consensus? Was to combine?
Yeah.
And have the pay, or like the pay aside, or?
We budgeted overall for, we budgeted twenty-seven thousand for the part-time position downtown, we budgeted eighty-seven thousand, uh shoot, you might be wrong, it might've been eighty thousand, seven thousand five hundred, whatever, but anyway, eighty-seven thousand dollars for the assistant.
So have the city assistant city manager also do the job of the part-time position that we're looking at higher, for the rate of eighty thousand, whatever was, was budgeted?
That's a total dollar amount, so that's a gross amount,扣除 taxes.
I would just request, you know, this is really the first time I've, I've heard these discussions, and I'm not part of the committee, there's only two of us on this uh bench tonight that were not part of those committees, that'd be Chip and myself, and it sounds like there's been a lot of this, lot of discussion, which should happen in, in committees, but yet, I, I haven't heard anything that you, you brought forward. Uh before being expected to vote on this, I certainly would love an opportunity for any one of you to reach out to me and provide to me what you're proposing, uh and seek my feedback. I would love to know, you know, at least have some input to it, before taking so long. So that'd be wonderful, I don't know, uh whether it's these, Gene, Darton, if anyone wants to. Okay, certainly.
My concern, I don't agree with combined. Um I feel like it needs to be separate positions. Um I called the city of commerce, just kind of see, I know that they've got roughly seventy-five hundred in the city of commerce, which is um double what we have here, but they have a city manager, they're advertising for an assistant manager, they have a city clerk, they have two that wouldn't, we don't have those departments, so that wouldn't work. They have a public work director, a water, wastewater manager, a water and sewer director, an H R director, finance director, a mainstream director, a planning and zoning director, and a building inspector, all on staff. And we're expecting our staff to do all these positions.
That's, that's exactly what they are doing right now, they are doing all this.
And so I feel like that it needs to be two separate jobs. I feel like we need to leave the two positions. I feel like we're overworking our people, and I don't think that's.
Not to mention, we've already tried to, as I understand it, we've already tried to uh fill this position before, and uh from all the applicants that we got, as I understand it, um there wasn't enough money on the table to entice them to come to the city. Well, you go add more responsibility without the pay, um then you're really gonna struggle trying to find somebody to, to bring in. Um so I would agree with Denise, uh for your reasons, that you stated as well, as to what I just stated, I think that this should be separate positions.
They are also, they're hiring an assistant manager, that's a new position, that they're adding to um their city, it's not something that they have now, they're adding to their staff, and they're also offering a sign-on bonus with that. I don't know the amount of the sign-on bonus, I didn't ask that, it was just listed, and I looked at their application. Um I know, um like I said, they've got more people to do, so I don't feel like we need maybe quite all these people at this time, and I feel like that we're just adding too much on, and that we don't need to combine these. That's just, kind of not feeling on that.
I think it should be table for, for the rest of.
Positions, maybe, or, and this wasn't an advertised item, you could either have it on the agenda next week, or have it each weekend.
Let's say we can get some youth up between now and next week, among all of us individually, to a town where it's, one problem, six messages, emails, have them, and see what happens all this, before, if with camera put on, we'll put it on the agenda.
Cause we've already pledged it for both of these, the only thing that wouldn't be vested would be the sign-on bonus.
Have some discussion about that during the week, and then next week, we discuss it some more, is that what you plan?
So you, you do want me to put it on the agenda next week?
Yes. Just, just case of making, making ready.
I'd also like to add, while it's uh fresh in my mind right now, um I don't, I don't necessarily agree or disagree with the sign-on bonus for the part-time position, but. Oh, okay, all right, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Good question. Okay, uh the D R I for Belt and Bridge, who, who reviewed that?
So that R D C should've sent us the information, I've inquired, and they haven't got response back from them, so uh, you know, we have, as y'all were, where we have the transplacements. You know, we have, as y'all were aware, we have the transportation study. Uh there's some inadequacies and other items they reported as far as water sewer needs. I mean, we have numbers we use, but they should recognize those numbers as well. So hopefully, I mean, if I get it this week, y'all will have it. Uh, my concern, as you know, is just looking at transportation impact on that uh, on the surrounding properties uh and the access are gonna be a significant challenge.
Have they come in with that, full application?
They, if you remember, they sent us.
I sent, I saw conception, right?
Yes. We don't have a conceptional, so we recognize, you know, we let them know that we're gonna give a conceptional approval.
Speaking of that, is our moral, is it to build a motorway open the hours?
It is with y'all's approval. You have to vote though. It changes.
I, I seen this was inspired this month, is that correct?
So that'll be for y'all to approve with those changes. Like I said, what we're changing is really, so we're making some omissions because we had left some elements in there that are no longer part of the equation. And that's up to y'all's approval.
I, I didn't know you had planned a motorway, it's not with this, with, if I were certain day to, if you said this part, that would change, uh change for a day, but it's not.
So I think we went into February, but I think you're, I think you'll be in a position to decide whether or not with this, our mission or changes. I keep saying omissions, don't leave, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, we got G M A training for staff and council Thursday. Staff is during the day.
Right. That's right.
And council at boxy on Thursday.
Yes.
The little ladies.
I have a question about that, sorry. I was looking on my calendar. We have the downtown communication. Uh committee meeting scheduled for five thirty on Thursday.
So we were, so we had to obey them that council that date.
Is that, is that not yet been determined for when it's rescheduled?
No, actually, we're gonna talk about that later. Soon. We're gonna see what a challenge it is for all.
The little ladies, is that, when's the twenty fifth, she was on, was the depot? Night at dinner, night at dinner, dinner six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Oops.
I'll correct that. That's my, my, I'll do that.
Okay, the little government society that's at the depot, seven o'clock, four minute of the month. Says all in body. Okay, now then, committee scheduling time, this is the fun part of this.
Let me show you all some, show you how difficult this is. One, you work, you work. Uh, you're painfully retired, you work, you work, you work. Lord knows I work. But look at this, this is unbelievable. If you all know, and we gotta be respectful of everybody's time, and we certainly are. Believe it or not, all the margins that you see on there, that is either meetings, some of it's holidays. We get nine holidays a year, so yes, they're identified in there. But between court, planning commission, now that we have a, a comp plan, all that's included. Here's what's, um, you know, you get to say, why is this so difficult? Well, Chip has his schedule, Garnet has his schedule. And, and I'm not picking on YouTube, but we'll go down and say, Gene's the only guy that says, let me know when it starts, right, Gene? The mayor has his, don't ask him on a Monday or a Friday because he's not the happy camper. And Denise gets her schedule every other, so we've got the understanding. But here's what's unbelievable. Eighty days out of two hundred and sixty days, we've already had meetings that are scheduled. So that's thirty percent of what we have available and it's frustrating and discouraging for me to come. You know, for all of us, we want to get together, we want to address some of these issues, we want to have, but I, you know, I'm wondering what the answer is to this because I don't know if it's had another work session in the month uh that we can deal with all these because it's gotten to be impossible. I mean, when I say, and that's not criticism, that's just reality. You know, this week as an example, so we're meeting tonight. Uh, we have tomorrow, we wouldn't have Thursday, we can't do Friday. Can't do Friday because I already have other obligations. But that's, you know, it's, if it's not this week, that's next. I mean, when you begin to look at that, you begin to see what a real challenge it is for. So I don't know what the answer is.
Now here's a thought that crossed my mind. I, I, I wrote it out a year ago, I'm gonna read this again this time. It said, it said, this committee meets this time, this day of every month.
I was gonna recommend.
Well, the only thing I say to that is sometimes it's not necessary that we meet every, for some, you know, but.
Yes, a staff, we had a cabinet made up, this, this committee, just not to do the work session, it's this first Monday, or second Monday every month at six o'clock. Council meeting, second Monday around seven o'clock, this committee meetings, I, I don't know if it's gonna work or not, I keep saying that.
Well, that's why I said maybe we do another work session before we set aside that night to meet with committees. You know, and meet with the committees we need to because, I mean, it's, I know it's frustrating for y'all, it's frustrating.
I agree with the mayor, I mean, it's, it's a lot, I think it would be easier if everybody knew where they had to be. You can, I don't know, I can schedule, you know, if I know three weeks in advance, this is where I've gotta be. Then it's easier for me to plan that instead of, you know, some people who are like, hey, can you meet this Thursday? Well, man, not this Thursday, I've already got something on my, on my calendar.
Clearly, I, I believe that.
So I mean, for those committees that it's essential to meet months and months, you know, figure out where we can get it on the schedule. And for those that don't need to meet, you know, every other month or once a quarter, set them out in advance and put them on the calendar.
Well, when you say this committee doesn't need to meet this month, skip that month, do I need? But then, you know, here's another problem we got. We got nine committees.
Well, that's my, that's my point. So when you're doing that, you know, if you look at that calendar, you can see there's availability. That's why I'd say I don't like the idea of having another night that we set aside, but maybe that's easier. Maybe that's easier to say, okay, the first Monday of the month is, you know, if it's set aside for committee meetings. Or something like that, cause it's, it's a challenge. Columbus is a good word.
Mondays are good for me just because, I'm just gonna tell you, Mondays are good for me because when he's doing the scheduling, so he doesn't have to think which Monday that I have to be off early. I'm off at one or two o'clock every Monday.
Well, late in the evening's good for me because I can't never tell when they're gonna die.
Hold on a second, Brian, did you wanna write that down?
He, he recorded.
It's a trick.
He's getting recorded. But no, but then, if we set all these say five thirty afternoon, I think always in that five thirty evening afternoon, maybe this, maybe six o'clock. I don't know, it's, it's, that's my mind, but it looks like that's supposed to come with these, because Moss kid, Chip's kid, Garnet's.
Well, why don't y'all share with us what you think, we, because honestly, we do need to come up with a solution that's not gonna be suitable there. But like I said, then you throw another nine days into the equation, you know, uh multiply that times twelve, you're all up there. And so I think it would wear me out, without a doubt. I'll probably wear y'all out.
I believe I can't, I can't receive any of that.
Well, and that's, you know, that's a fair statement because we have by ordinance, the number of meetings that you'll get paid for.
That's another consideration, there's, there's a lot to this.
Well, I know, and I, if I'm frustrated, y'all gotta be frustrated. Very similar to what you just said, you know, well, what about part and rec? Well, I, I had to go, that's why I said that, this is what G M A's offered, that's what we can do. And on top of that, ironically, you know, when they said that, I said, well, we'll bump court, but I'm not changing the date, it's gonna be the next week. It shows the challenge of the lineup.
Frustration? So that's something that's worth thinking about, I, I don't know.
Um, I would support, you know, going ahead and scheduling out, saying, you know, it'll be certain days, these are when these meetings need. They're gonna, the meetings have to take place anyway, right? Unless we just don't have the, you know, material or the need because we got canceled. So it was at that time. But I, I really do believe that that is a fantastic idea. Like I said, the meetings are gonna have to take place anyway, unless we just go ahead and put them on the calendar. I know there's, there's drawbacks to that, but I think that's probably the best, most effective way.
I think it's the least painful way, to be honest with you.
It's also kind of a layer of that new type. I know me.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm spending on Monday, I'm gonna.
No, I mean, he, he, he's fine and, and, and for goodness.
I can't do any more than doing, I mean, that's reality. You had nine more to twelve more months. It's an unrealistic expectation. You know, I mean, and, and for y'all, you can only get paid for so many meetings. I think it wouldn't take long before somebody said, now wait a minute, the ordinance says I get paid for four more additional meetings. The other two I've had, I'm not gonna compensate.
And I, y'all should compensate back. Well, as we said, you know, there's, there's nine committees and uh not all of them need to meet every month, right? I mean, there's probably a few, like you said, four that we could probably pull out uh that maybe just, you know, put on the calendar once a quarter. And then as we approach that, go ahead and pull them off. Uh, you know, we can even do that two months in advance because there's, you know, we probably, if there's something that needed to be addressed in that committee, we could probably know that two months prior to, or at least one month prior to, and pull that meeting off. That for you, you know, maybe be down to five, five to eight meetings.
Yeah, probably utilities and finance are an absolute every month. It is. Some things mature, just like right now, the street committee deal, we gotta get that bid back, they finished it, so.
Seventy thirty, never does move on.
I know, y'all, people are dying to come to it.
No, we ain't doing that.
We did talk about sign last week though.
We did.
Yes, no, it's not a good time to talk about sign.
I ain't gonna let you forget.
Nope. Yeah, let's share some ideas about that, maybe I could, sort of some ideas about dates and what have been times, you know, same time. Feel like y'all said, some days are better, more ziggy than others.
Well, I'll just let everybody know right quick, here to mine, but as far as me, uh any day of the week after five o'clock, I can almost guarantee ninety-nine percent of the time. Thank you.
You do that much.
No, I'm working soon.
Six o'clock.
Well, I can only guarantee six fifteen, because like if I have to close, I don't get off till six, so I'm later. Several Mondays.
So we can say six thirty then?
I like Mondays. I like doing that, the nine more meetings a month, and that's, I like capital M, see, everything we can pull off on.
Well, we could do more than one meeting, there's a lot, the other, the other ones that could meet at five, that I don't know on the committee, they could go ahead and meet. And my meeting could be.
You're actually, hold on, one extra work session is what you're asking, is what's up?
Well, yeah, all the work that's started, maybe.
Hit everybody one time, hit, up, all the council here at one time.
But an example, a good example was the other night, finance meeting, and y'all also served on pardon rec. You could easily fall into that and take your knockout, those are all in one evening and that made it. Chip comes in at seven thirty and we meet with, you know, the street committee or you two.
I think you could stack probably two to three committee meetings on Monday. You just, you'll start at five, five to six, six to seven, and then, and uh, and then again, Dennis just won't have a break. And I don't know, neither will uh, I'm here.
Just can't do that on the fourth Monday. See, there you go. Sorry, it's horrible society, a poor Monday.
But that's, that's why we need to have this discussion.
I, I made next weekend, maybe she had to do the holidays, we got Tuesday, please, seven o'clock, so I do. And I think, anybody else can, I guess I'm gonna add to you, do you have some comments? Send some comments. Anybody's gonna, wanna, wanna say anything? Come on, Chris.
I'll say, yeah. I have cold, I'm gonna have. Okay, um, I sent an email to the council, I don't, I didn't see it on the agenda, I don't know if you got it, I was asking. Um, but I wanted to request that the Luau Circle can pay. We have asked in the past numerous times and since then, traffic has increased significantly on the Luau Circle. We have the garnish truck that now comes, comes, we have mail now that comes every day. Um, during Christmas, my daughter was with me, we had Amazon truck and P S coming every day. Um, there's City of Lula vehicles now come, I count sometimes up to four times a day. And my home business, on the weekends, I have a lot of traffic coming. So I'm asking again if it could be considered or at least discussed that Luau Circle can pay or at least possibly pay down to my street, to my house. Could you get done?
So, no, did not, did you send my address?
I sent it to council meeting questions at cityoflula.com. Did it change?
We don't use it anymore.
Yeah.
You don't change, you don't do that. So what's the new thing that you use?
You can send it to my address, Dennis, everybody knows it. D E N N I S period B E R G I N at cityoflula.com. And uh. Yep, given here, it's a lot like.
Capital J O E dot capital T H O B N I S at cityoflula.com.
Sorry, I didn't get it, I didn't know it had changed.
Yeah, but you're resume, maybe that's what that you said.
But that's what I'd like to ask. Uh, in the past, I've been told that it's too long with the street. Um, then it, then it said there was maybe a possibility of continuation of the pavement where it ends down to our house at least.
You're, you're in one corner, is that correct?
Uh huh. One corner and pavement ends up in. So just consider them as options. There's a lot of traffic, you know, we've had it in the past and.
Do you mind if I ask for your address again?
Five five six four Lu Allen Circle.
How you spell that?
Yummy, yummy, A L U L Y N.
I just want to look at it on the map so I can be familiar with it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me get one. I got a solution for you part-time.
That's Beltwood.
My name's Beltwood, hey. Okay, I got a solution that y'all often agree. People elected a mayor. I mean, he's a mayor, good as job. Most of these people don't understand. A mayor with no powers has the city manager. On this next city manager that y'all hired, could you consider, and I said this as a voting season, where a couple of city councils, could you put it out there where we, the people, vote a city manager, you know, part-time or whatever? And y'all discuss the pays and stuff like that.
Go ahead, we got the charter. Go ahead, we got the charter, same as I said, if you get them. You know, you don't have an issue, we will separate them.
But technically consideration, I mean, you know, you know.
Pre, pre-jean is what.
You know, with, with the people out here.
But, but that.
Guy works together.
What, what that, for the technical part, I can do the city charter. Am I right, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, Chip?
My apologies for my tardiness.
I'll do best when we meet, Chip.
Well, hey, uh, you looked at me for starting, so uh anyway, um, again, thank everybody for coming out, uh, thank you for your input. Look forward to seeing y'all uh next week and uh, you know, I don't have a whole lot to say, it's eighteen.
Thank everyone for coming out, crowd loves you. Next week are we gonna be uh voting, the parking lot, and more? Next week are we gonna be opening the parking lot in Mark?
We, we have not had a committee meeting in a
Y'all, it's like that. Glad that everybody come and getting their input. Of course, we need more people than you have to put their input in. So we can do our job, like we need to do.
I got the comment, brag, brag nice.
Thank you everyone for coming out, and I want to brag on my neighbors. I have really good neighbors. I had horse issues this week, twice, and I have good neighbors who carry my horse. We got it back on. So Lulawell's a great place to live. We have good neighbors.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Um, also, please keep bringing your citizens' comments. Um, that really is what thrives, what we do, so, you know, think about those. That is an opportunity. You can obviously, you know, as we discussed, you can email, uh, the city at any time, but, uh, we really do value your input here at these meetings. So I just want to thank you all for that. And again, uh, for the freeze last month, I mean, we, I mean, there's a lot. Everyone in Lulawell, I think, has endured quite a bit of that, uh, but, uh, we came through, and I think everyone stayed safe. Uh, so, just thankful for that. Thank you.
Joe mentioned about, um, Royal Gathers, because we can
I wasn't sure you were gonna do it. Okay, you ready? My turn. Okay, a couple of things I want to say. I was sitting in my last thunder this time. Anybody knows, probably knows what Royal Gathers was, the youth auto parts store downtown. One of those sort of buildings. The Ross brothers have bought that building. Their closets are renovating that building. They have a sale on the contents of it this Friday and Saturday. For April, and also next Friday and Saturday, April. So if you got any interest in Royal Auto Parts stuff, it was covered up, so if y'all have never been inside that store, it'd be a good chance to do it. It's history in Lulawell.
And we got some great parts.
I don't watch that, I think in this.
It's all through the
They sold Holly Ford barrels for a hundred dollars a piece.
Uh, some of us, I want to say, I want to thank Debbie Smith for giving us a phone about what's going on right here. You've done a great job. I would appreciate that. Another one I want to bring, you might have heard of that. I want to do this myself. David Wilson, Lulawell Breckin Town. He, he had a problem, regular problems doing freeze. He doesn't want to make a point, you know, but nobody's there. So he called me, I, I called Dennis, I called boy, and I said, what, man, I'm moving back here, John, let's take care of this thing as soon as. I called David back, he went over and cut the water off to save those people from more damage and more loss. I mean, there's, there's one business, there's another business, that's why we need more of.
And, um, there's not one to discuss about Teresa's daughter.
Yeah.
Guys, we got a lot to celebrate and a lot of concerns, but we have had two more new infant additions to the family. Uh, of Lulawell employees, so Skyler's one of them, and, uh, uh, baby's just, uh, quickly. Uh, their baby's a little pre-ensured, but it's healthy and doing better every day, and mom's doing much better now, so, uh, baby's not home from, uh, the hospital yet. Hopefully that may happen this week. But Teresa's daughter had, uh, uh, baby on, uh, twenty-sixth of December. And, oh my goodness, it seems like baby has faced every challenge, but the Lord is with them. Please do keep them in, in your prayers. Baby's home, but Teresa's daughter has had, uh, one issue after another uh, with regards to, uh, uh, her pregnancy and what have you, so, I mean, it's just crazy, but, um, hopefully, and that's, I see that went on all of last week, and then pleased to see that everything was going so much better, only to, I think that their doctors have raised concerns, which apparently haven't been valid yet. So that's the good news, maybe they're wrong, but, uh, anyway, two more additions in there. It's cute as a button again, so. And poor Skyler, uh, that child, hopefully we'll throw him more like his wife, more like his wife. He could have designed that child right now if he wanted. All they didn't have was hair on its chin, so the other than that, it was
And I want to just say something. You know, the dogs, I mean, the college put out an edition with the dogs. And, uh, it's gonna be available. Eight to four, Wednesday through Friday. They just send a special edition of the Georgia Bulldogs, and you, you can get a copy at the Times.
Do they play this, this week?
That's why I heard nine.
The bad question is the TCU play.
No.
That's why I heard nine.
Are they only available at this time? Yeah, they're not putting them out.
Are they free too?
I, I don't know.
No, they are not. They're three dollars, or there's one that is eight dollars.
So how do we get the times to clear a stack to see how?
The law's shipping our money.
He said that one in his department.
It said you have to go to the times to pick it up, is this available in the law, law, I don't know what the difference is in the copies, but once
So give us the dates, I'd like to.
It was, um, Wednesday through Friday of this week from eight to four.
Oh, cool. If anybody's going there, please let it know. I'm just buying dollars because I know I'll be on Friday, right?
Hey, let me know. I'll see if I can get one. I volunteer.
She got, she got a pocket room to, to
They're around there.
Yeah, they're around there. We don't get there, we're, they're gonna be out.
Thursday and Friday, that's it.
And we're gonna have to wait on the I can't answer that. I just read the article. I was wondering when they were. I wanted a paper.
You said, hey, you, hey, you see the front of these and the time's driven?
Yeah, the time's printing, they just see
I think, they, they, they Okay, I'll, I guess, dig my happy note like this, because here's my happy note now, I'm gonna tell you what's going on.
Move it around here, go home.
Go home.
Ah, I wanna go home. Seventy-five to seven. No, you can't.
Ellen and
Yeah. He said, huh?
I went to bed. I was like, I'm done. There you go, make it go home.
Yeah, I can do first one. Actually, I can